Hi, we're now live here at St. Paul Parish Hall. As we are waiting for Conjen Edgar Diba Dahos. Oh, and then the Conjen. Kaya, come on mga kababayan. Tayo na magpunta sa St. Paul Parish Hall at 3:30 West Cora Gebu. Kaya, ang laki ng St. Paul Parish Hall. Ang iniintay namin kayo. I think MC is about to start already.
Thank you for the nice, beautiful man. I don't know if I'm gonna start. Quarter to three, but I'm gonna start a few songs. I am sitting in the river station. Got a ticket for my destination. On a tour of one night's lands. My suit fits and darling. Every stop is new to me. You're not with anyone but me. Hold on. I wish I was. Hold on. The mountains take them home. The mountains explain them all. My blood flows silently before me. Every day is a new stream of signals. My heart is free. But each town lives the same again. The bridges and the factories. I can't resist the smells I see. It reminds me that I have to be hold on. I wish I was. Hold on. The mountains take them home. The mountains explain them all. My blood flows silently before me. Do not sing my songs again and pray again. And pretend. But all my words tonight will be shades of your heart. I can't deny say no. I need someone to comfort me. Hold on. I wish I was. Hold on. The mountains take them home. The mountains explain them all. My blood flows silently before me. I'm sitting in the river station. Got a ticket for my destination. On a tour of one night's lands. My suit fits and darling. Every stop is new to me. You're not with anyone but me. Hold on. I wish I was. Hold on. The mountains take them home. The mountains explain them all. My blood flows silently before me. Every day is a new stream of signals. My heart is free. I'll never come back to you. These shades of your heart. I can't deny say no. I need someone to comfort me. Hold on. I wish I was. Hold on. The mountains take them home. The mountains explain them all. My blood flows silently before me. Silently before me. Excuse me. In the middle of the night, there was something happening to me. There was something I would like to hold to see. It's just a poor, dry, and unhappy man. Have you seen my wife, Mr. Jones? Do you know what it's like on the outside? Don't go talking too loud, you're causing us pain. Mr. Jones. I keep screaming in my ears to hear a sound. Maybe someone is standing underground. Or have they given up and gone to bed? Thinking there's a way to exist in my spirit. Have you seen my wife, Mr. Jones? Do you know what it's like on the outside? Don't go talking too loud, you're causing us pain. Mr. Jones. I keep screaming in my ears to hear a sound. Maybe someone is standing underground. Or have they given up and gone to bed? Thinking there's a way to exist in my spirit. Have you seen my wife, Mr. Jones? Do you know what it's like on the outside? Don't go talking too loud, you're causing us pain. Mr. Jones.
What's it?
Uh, singing sport. Singing. Okay. St. Paul, St. Paul Parish.
Maybe someone is standing underground. Or have they given up and gone to bed? Thinking there's a way to exist in my spirit. Have you seen my wife, Mr. Jones? Do you know what it's like on the outside? Don't go talking too loud, you're causing us pain. Mr. Jones.
Ay, sino pang MC? Hindi ko pala. Si Mr. Tres. Pero, aquino ang ating mga man of the hour. Dalo siyang mag-.
No, it's not man of the hour.
Magmanang, magmanang. Ng hour or ng monitor in uh, sound system dito. Kuya Jonathan Gabriel is one of our featured artists. And a wonderful, not only an artist, but truly a wonderful man in the community. In fact, he used to be a movie actor in the Philippines. He is one of our featured artists on Duha Buys America. So talagang maraming mga celebrity ang nandito. Kaya, come and join us. And hi, sir lad, Kristi. This is St. Paul Parish Hall here in Arizona. Ito ang mga member at founder ng COPA. COPA stands for, sir. This is the president of COPA.
COPA stands for Coalition Filipino American Chambers of Commerce. It's a 24-chamber organization all across the country.
Wow.
So we are visiting and supporting PACA today. And also, we are announcing our Save Lives. The main vaccines for the Philippines.
His name is?
My name is Jerry Falle.
Thank you so much, President Jerry Falle. And si madam, madam, great po kayo.
Hello, Tina Bolchan. Thank you so much for coming from COPA, supporting PACA here in Arizona. Thank you so much. Support, donate, and donate for our Save Lives.
Yeah, ng Save Lives. Donate vaccines, Save Lives.
To the Philippines.
To the Philippines.
Uh, the beneficiary is PCCI, which is the Philippine Chambers of Commerce and Industries in the Philippines. Who will be donating and they'll be receiving the donations to purchase vaccines and testing kits for our Filipino kababayan.
Nice, very nice. Thank you po.
Thank you.
At kasama natin. Mister Ryan Arbolio. Another man of the hour. A very famous artist here in the valley.
Good afternoon, Mr. Jones.
Good afternoon, Ryan. Ryan, I wanna invite you to join the search. Million Dollar Minggo. AC Passwell, the founder of Million Dollar Minggo is a Filipino and the founder of this Million Dollar Minggo charity event in Scottsdale, Arizona. He's looking for singer for American National Anthem.
Oh, okay.
Send me just few minute video.
Okay.
And I'll send it to him, cause he's looking.
Sure, sure.
This is Million Dollar. Most of them are celebrities.
Oh, sorry.
And a player, movie actors, and models will be.
That'll be great, that'll be honored. Thank you.
Yeah, so Yan, si Ryan.
Good afternoon, everyone, Ryan.
You're going to sing later?
I'll be singing the national anthem.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Great.
Of course, proud, of course.
So national anthem, both US and?
No, the Filipino national.
Filipino national anthem. Good, good, thank you. And this is the US.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And then send me. And so, thank you. Uh, this is Miss Ro.
Ang live ba yan?
Opo, nakalive na tayo.
Hello, kumusta kayong Pilipina?
President of Philippine Nurses Association.
As president.
As president, as president.
Ito binakita sa Pilipinas.
Opo.
Oo, mga kababayan ko, disiplina po ang kailangan. Mag mask po tayo, ha? Washed, social distancing po. At pag may TV po kayo nakikita ng news, hug punin 'yung alisin ng mask niyo para makita ka sa TV. Keep your mask off.
Kaya nakamas kami.
Oo, di ba? Hm, di ko sayo. New news, nakikita ko.
Thank you, ate. Miss.
Hi.
Nanette Kaduchak, the founder of two best and biggest med spas. Katow, Dolce Aesthetics.
Aesthetics, yeah.
Dolce.
Laser Lounge.
Right here in Scottsdale and in Chandler.
Yes.
Very, very supportive sister in the community. Thank you, madam.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome, anytime.
Looking forward to have you at the Duha Buys America someday.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, huh? At nanay.
Kahit konting liwanag ng pagibig. Ang sakit iyong ipahiwati. Kung kilimong kahit kada ng lahat. Ang ahawin ng tingin ay kahit tangin. Kahit konting patingin. Kung magkagaling sa'yo. Ay labis ko ng ikaw ay mahal. Kahit konting patingin. Kung magkagaling sa'yo. Ay labis ko ng ikaw ay mahal. Kahit konting patingin. Kung magkagaling sa'yo. Ay labis ko ng ikaw ay mahal. Kahit konting patingin. Kung magkagaling sa'yo. Ay labis ko ng ikaw ay mahal. Kahit konting liwanag ng pagibig. Ang ikaw at sa puso na hapis. Ang pag-asa ay para kuya tekitan. At ang kahit kaya ay ang ginagawa. Kahit konting liwanag ng pagibig. Ang sakit iyong ipahiwati. Kung kilimong kahit kada ng lahat. Ang ahawin ng tingin ay kahit tangin. Kahit konting patingin. Kung magkagaling sa'yo. Ay labis ko ng ikaw ay mahal. Kahit konting patingin. Kung magkagaling sa'yo. Ay labis ko ng ikaw ay mahal. Kahit konting patingin. Kung magkagaling sa'yo. Ay labis ko ng ikaw ay mahal. Kahit konting patingin. Kung magkagaling sa'yo. Ay labis ko ng ikaw ay mahal. Okay, I have one more song. Okay, sa bawat yugtun ng buhay, may wastwa at may mali. Sa bawat nilangan, may bulan, may tibi at tingin. Madidin ang paligid. Ateng abi walang hanggan. Anyo at bulan na mundo sa'yo pinatagtan. Wapapahane kay bigyan. Isilang kamaganyan. Isangulat sa kamuntuhan. Ligtas ka sa kasalanan. Pinalala yo sa'yo ang buhay sa mundo. Maraming sari ng buhay na turan ko. Di makita di mati din sa ilaw ka. Tungo sa himahahanap buhay na panahon. Di bitin ang umari. Di mo mati ang gawin. Si kawang puso damdamin wala sa'yo kung mapansin. Sampung taliri kay bigyan. Jankan na pagigingan. Pipi ka manang isinila. Patila ka sa sinuman. Pinalala yo sa'yo ang buhay na mundo. Maraming sari ng buhay na turan ko. Di makita di mati din sa ilaw ka. Tungo sa himahahanap buhay na panahon. Ano sa'yo ang musika sa'yo ba ay mahalagang? Maghahingin ko paligid ang lahat'y matinig. Mapalag ka o kaibigan napakainay na mundo. Sa isang tingin ka tulad mo. Malangka'y walang hulo. Pinalala yo sa'yo ang buhay na mundo. Maraming sari ng buhay na turan ko. Di makita di mati din sa ilaw ka. Tungo sa himahahanap buhay na panahon. Di makita di mati din sa ilaw ka. Tungo sa himahahanap buhay na panahon. Okay, I'm starting now or? Okay, this is my last song, so I'm starting. One more? Okay. Isilang kasang tungito. Ating tuwa na magulat mo. At ang papaalangan'y nila. Ano na'y tatay mo? Di malaman 'yung ka doon. Unamastan pa ang patulog mo. Sa gabing na buhay. Naay sa pati ng katastros. Sa umana na may kanon. Naay sa tuwa sa'yo. May malaki ka na. At ngayon't mati't malayan. Di masipapaya walang makakataon. Ikaw ba'y may langat pa ko? At di ma-magpasan 'yung mukha. Ang mga mga sa'yo ay mukha. Di mo may langit sa'yo ang mukha. Naay mapansin. Pagkat ang halis mo mas dun ang kayo. Di mo siya may napansin. Nagkaan pa ang mga araw. At ang pantas mo'y magigaw. Ikaw ang ano't sasabang bisyo. At ang umuwi namang lapitan. Anyo ang nanggugaw. At ang umuwi ang napakagandang. At kaliwong mga matayang. Di diwak mo na lang't mo napapansin. At sisi-sisi sa'yo ang laman mo. Naay nakamali. At sisi-sisi sa'yo ang laman mo. Naay nakamali.
Hi, Ate Ethel.
Hello.
Glad you can join. At least, you can join us. And thank you for everything that you have done. Ate Ethel Masario is the past CFO, president here in Arizona. And she has done so much for this event. I love your haircut, ate.
Thank you, thank you.
Parang hindi ko marinig 'yung alam mo. Um. Mahina ang aking.
Hold on.
Sound.
Can you hear me now?
Um, I'm the one I could not hear.
This is my last one.
I have to ask somebody to help me.
Okay.
I'm sure people can hear your sound, but I cannot hear.
I can hear you.
Ate Ethel, put your name. Ate. We got your name there. We got your name. So, ate, since I'm going to focus the video to whoever's performing, maybe you can speak? And talk about who they are, ate.
Oh, uh, not Edward? So just doing the chant? Okay.
I'm having some difficulty too. Hi, Sha. Yay. This Sharon Jane Bayson. Ate Ethel, by the way, your, uh, the sponsors. You made an excellent job in rising those sponsors on the screen.
They're flashing.
Yeah. Hi, girl! We are actually broadcasting live on Facebook, on YouTube, and on my, uh, Realus, uh, Facebook profile. So, you can send your information, you can send your questions and comments In any platform, Facebook or YouTube, and we can actually ask these questions that you have to the content Once the program begins. And Ate Ethel can read it as well. Thank you, Ate Ethel, for joining me, my stream yard. Can you hear me, Ate?
You can't hear me. Thank you so much, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. And in 15 seconds we'll start. Before that, uh, if you want water or soda with no sugar, it's over there.
This is from Ate Ethel Lusario, and I agree. Our Mr. Jonathan Gabriel is one of the most amazing singers we have in the valley.
And presidents of different organizations are representatives are underway. But anyway, according to COVID-19 guidelines, that there are only allowed four persons in one table. Okay? And maintain short distances. Four persons in one table. Now we'll call on the MCE Master Ceremonies, CPA, a personal adjustment.
Magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat. It's my honor, uh, to introduce everyone. However, before we start, we would like to start with the National Anthem, followed by invocation, okay? So for the National Anthem, we have Mr., um... Ryan Argilio. And he has a passion in the R&B music, soul, and classic rock. He's such a versatile singer influenced by boys who met Stevie Wonder, Brian Munnine, Michael Jackson, just the main of you. We are honored to have Ryan sing the National Anthem of the USA, followed by the Philippine National Anthem.
That is Austin. For the American National Anthem. Oh, say can you see By the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright stripes in bright stars Through the perilous fight All the red birds we watched Were so gallantly streaming And rockets reclusive The bombs bursting in night Gave proof of the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does the star-spangled banner wave For the land of the free And the home of the brave? And I pray for the National Anthem. Tayang magiting, klasmas tihan aral Aral ng puso sa gitimoy buhay Lupang hinihah, duyan ka ng magiting Sa malulupin, di ka pasisitil Sa dagat kapuntong, sa simula Sa daming mong magaw, may binag ang tula At awit sa paglayang minamakan Ang kissap ang watawat mo'y tapumpay Na nagdiningin ang bituin at araw niyang kailan Kamay di magtititim Lupan ang araw na walang ating pagsinta Buhay laging sa feeling mo Ang ligayan ang pag may malapit Ang mawatay ng dahil sa'yo
Nice job, Ryan Argilio.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Argilio. You have a wonderful voice, thank you very much. Now we have Associate Speaker of St. Paul Catholic Church to do our invocation. Good afternoon, Father. His father is Shaya.
May we please stand? Father Bruno Argilio is unavoidably absent, so I'll represent him this afternoon. To begin this session in the name of the Father, the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. We thank you, our God, for the gift of your leadership. We thank you for the leadership and the commands of Filipinos here in the United States of Arizona. We ask you to give us your wisdom as with the bread, to bring progress to our families, to our communities, to those back at home, and also to humanity and art. Use us as your instruments to serve you and to glorify your name now and forever through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Father, I saw ya. I saw ya. Thank you, Father.
Thank you very much, Father Shaya.
Ryan, great job!
First of all, before we start, I have a nice time.
Wonderful.
The person who is here is Paul E. Mike, Mr. Crispato.
Miss Ethel Lusario.
And I would like to first honor our special guest.
Ethel Lusario is the one behind those...
Padahos, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Counsel General. It's Counsel General Edgar Padahos and all of his associates from the Counsel General's office.
Ate Ethel, if you can, um, send to me in private chat all the sponsors and I can actually run it as a banner later on.
Please stand up if you're here.
The Consul General is here now, and we're waiting for your question. Any one of you has a question?
The sponsor of this group is by St. Paul's Catholic Church.
Because of Dr. Pam? Because of Dr. Pam?
We have Grace Home Healthcare, Heritage Peter.
Another sponsor, Sharon Bayson.
Uh, we have Suqoia and Lady K from, uh, by Paul and Gina Hallou. We have West USA Realty from Ethel Lusario.
Yes!
Integrity Home Healthcare, Mr. Crispato.
Right there.
Lutong Bahay from Ramon and Grace Go. Dilex Realty from Area Dawn. Wells Fargo by Mr. Edward Henry Lago. Didid Hoxton Maynard. Heritage Dentistry from...
Dr. Pam.
Dr. Pam Zapanta.
Right there.
Sweet Queens from Alaman Family. Arizona Post and Mortgage by Janet Palaco. Dilex Genesis, Maria Knox-Gordania. Bayson Productions.
Right there. Right there.
Help Out Kitchen by Edward Henry Lago. And Mas, Father Philippine Cuisine from Aida and Hala. Now I have other associations, Philippine organization. Uh, we have the Philippine American National Historical Society, Arizona.
Thanks.
From Long Island People and Mr. Delardo Ari. Please stand. Um, Chairperson of CFO Arizona, Mr. Alva DiGaris. Philippine American Fans of Arizona, Maribel and Verena Abola. Philippine American Chamber of Commerce, Prince Edward Lago. Philippine American Nurses Organization of Grand Canyon State, Nammer Kadusha. Naisa Buzal, Frank Rosales. Grace Willa Mike, uh, past president, Doctor Pam, the Father of Padahos. Philippine American Nurses Association of Arizona, Ape, Emma Rosales. Philippine American Heritage right group of Arizona, Jennifer Delmar, living in Arizona. And I would mention there was another association, our Philippine Association of Arizona Without Borders.
May I?
May I?
This is the Philippine of Arizona that's been here since 1966 and lines, Phoenix Lines Without Borders, and my name is Mary Perdon Villa.
And we have our... We have our volunteers, of course, we do not have this all together. We have a lot of our volunteers from the Philippine American Chamber of Commerce members, board of directors, and all our sponsors who are really very patient with us and just provided everything we needed for this conference. We want to thank you all, thank you very much. And thank you very much, Mr. Jonathan and Mr. Argilio, thank you so much. And Father Shaya. We have, um, before we start also, I would like to recognize the presence of Counsel General Edgar Padahos. Thank you so much. And now we have Mr. Admin Edward Henry Lago, who is actually President of our Philippine American Chamber of Commerce. He is a very, very active president, and he is currently the Senior Business Banking Manager Specialist and Relationship Manager at Wells Fargo Bank in Phoenix, Arizona. Um, in that job, he is primarily responsible for maintaining and developing new business banking and managing relationships with its business clients. Um, he is actively fit to be our president because he knows a lot about business and finances. Edward was Operations Supervisor, also at Survey, Sampling Inc., where he stayed there for six years for his bachelor's degree of science in management accounting. He graduated at a Catholic university run by SBD priests to cite of the Divine Word in the Philippines, the University of San Carlos, Tabu City. God, family, career, and giving back to his community are the reasons he wakes up in the morning motivated to be a better version of himself. In his outside work, Edward has recently started the business Arizona Gifts Work, where you can have your souvenir items and gifts custom-made. Edward is currently the president of, as you know, the Philippine American Chamber of Commerce of Arizona for year 2020 and 2021. The president of APOE Omega Alumni Association of Arizona for year 2020 and 2021. And Vice President of the Philippine American Support Team of Arizona 2020 to 2023. The foundation of Edwards, Ethos is family. He revels in the security and incomparable strength of his family that was given to him. Edward is a supportive brother to his sister, who is also the world's great, and is also the world's greatest uncle to his adorable nephew whom he treats like his own son.
Want to join us? You can actually go to the stream yard. You can go through this broadcast.
Ladies and gentlemen, let us welcome Mr. Edward Henry Lago.
Distinguished guests, dear colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, it is truly a pleasure for me to welcome you and everyone who are watching live on Facebook to our special town hall meeting organized by Paka. I am very grateful to you, Honorable Counsel General Edgar Padahos, uh, the Philippine Consulate General in Los Angeles, for gracing us with your presence as our guest speaker today. Thank you, Panja.
Thank you, Ate Ethel.
I also wish to thank Jerry Gagon, President of the Coalition of Philippine American Chambers of Commerce, together with us officers coming from, all the way from Los Angeles, California. Alva DiGaris, President and Chair of the Council Philippine Organizations, for being with us here today. It is also my pleasure for us to welcome all the community leaders and members of the Philippine American Community here in Arizona. Thank you for attending. The Philippine American Chamber of Commerce of Arizona, for more known as Paka, was established in 1994 by a group of Philippine American business owners with a vision and mission of promoting, fostering, and enhancing the business relationship among the members of the Chamber of the General Business Community locally and globally, including the Philippines. For 27 years now, Paka has strived in assisting Philippine American entrepreneurs in developing professional growth among our members through its business and management program. through its business and management programs and initiatives. Paka has also been very active in our Filipino community through social events, cultural activities, and committed to put all efforts possible in providing the resources available for our Kaba Bines. Despite the challenges we face in this time of pandemic, Paka is dedicated in hosting the Philippine Consular Outreach to our Kaba Bines here in Arizona every year.
Thank you, At the Etto.
Simultaneously today, with the active participation assistance of Paka, the, uh, and of course, our volunteers from Alpha Phi Omega and also the Filipino American Support Team of Arizona under the leadership of Mary Jane Marrose. And the Philippine Consular Outreach Program is also being held, where our Kaba Bines will also be able to take advantage of the consular services available right here, right now, such as passport renewal, dual citizenship, civil registry, and attend to any of our consular needs. It's a busy day. So I'll keep this brief and the town hall meeting is now officially open. Now I am welcome and I am delighted to welcome our guest speaker for today, uh, Consul General Edgar B. Padahos, who assumed his post as Consul General in Los Angeles in April sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Consul General Padahos first joined the Philippine Department of Foreign Affairs, DFA, nineteen ninety-seven. In the DFA, he has held various positions of responsibility, including most recently as Director of the Political and Security Division of the Office of ASEAN Affairs. In that role, he played a significant role in negotiations related to the Code of Conduct of Parties in the South China Sea during the Philippines' chairmanship of ASEAN in two thousand seventeen. Immediately prior to his posting to Los Angeles, Consul General Padahos has served as Consul General at the Philippine Consulate in Jeddah, Kingdom of Saudi Arabia. His other previous foreign assignments include the Philippine, uh, consulate, uh, here in Toronto from two thousand to two thousand three. The Philippine Consulate General in New York from two thousand three to two thousand seven. The Philippine Embassy in Bangkok, Thailand from two thousand nine to two thousand fifteen. Consul General Padahos is a graduate of U B College of Law. He also holds a Bachelor of Arts from the University of the Philippines in Baguio. Ladies and gentlemen, let us all welcome Consul General Edgar Padahos.
Thank you very much, Edward. It's good? Okay. So, thank you very much for the, uh, kind introduction. And, uh, I'm here with the, uh, Consular Service Program that we are rendering for the, over the next, uh, for the last two days. We arrive, uh, on Friday. And, uh, today's the last day of our Consular Outreach Program. So those of you who have not been applied for a passport towards citizenship, legalization of your documents, you're most welcome to visit us at the Holiday Inn. Uh, today's the last day. And, uh, I really didn't prepare any, uh, speech for this afternoon. I just wanted to give you some updates on what has been happening back at the Philippine Consulate here in Los Angeles and also what has been happening back home. Uh, uh, when I was in Jeddah, uh, I was there for, uh, three years. Uh, the number one problem affecting overseas Filipino workers was, of course, work-related. Alam natin kung gaano mahirap ang trabaho ng ating kababayan sa Saudi Arabia. I have seen it in person almost every day, receive requests for assistance from our fellow Filipinos, Filipinos who are being used in the workplace, the late salaries, their passports being withheld, Filipinos who cannot go home, Kahit na tapos lang kita ang kontrata, because in Saudi Arabia, for you to exit the kingdom, once your contract is expired, you need to have a final exit visa. And there's no other person or entity who can issue the final exit visa except your employer or sponsor. In other words, if you have some problem with your sponsor, that same sponsor can refuse to give you a final exit visa until the problem that you have against her or with it is resolved. So madami ang problema ganon sa atin. Back in Saudi Arabia, the total number of Filipinos under my jurisdiction, meaning the southwestern part of Saudi Arabia, I was only helping more than two hundred thousand Filipinos. Quanti lang? Quanti? That was, that's only for the southwestern. But for the entire region of Saudi Arabia, you're talking of almost a million Filipinos. So when I was informed by DFA in the early part of this year that they were going to transfer me to Los Angeles, they were telling me that, hey, uh, mukhang gaganim buhay mo. You are going to Disneyland. So I said, okay, let's see what will happen. I'm saying, once I'm in LA. When I arrived on April sixth, I was told that the total number of Filipinos who will be under my jurisdiction, meaning Southern California, Southern Nevada, and Arizona would be one point three million Filipinos. And I noticed that the number one problem of Filipinos and Filipino Americans, at least as far as Filipino, uh, Philippine Consular General that is concerned is you getting appointment for your consular services. Wala masyado 'yung mga work-related. Kokonti 'yun. Kung meron man, uh, it's easy for us to manage. So the number one problem that we are hearing from our fellow Filipino, Filipino Americans under our jurisdiction is availing yourselves of consular services. So today, it's my pleasure to inform you of some of the steps that we have already adopted to try to improve delivery of our services. Number one, we have increased the number of slots for passports from ninety-six per day to a hundred fifty per day. And starting next month, October, we will now be releasing appointments on a weekly basis. As po ngayon ang ginagawa natin, monthly basis. Ang release ng slots. And I noticed that kung monthly nating gagawin 'yung release, it's, it's probably, it's, it's taking a long time for you to wait to get an appointment. So beginning on October one, we will be releasing appointment slots for passports, dual citizenship, legalization of documents on a weekly basis. So we'll be releasing seven hundred fifty slots per week. Siguro naman hindi na pa mahirapan kumuha ng appointment. Why do we have to do it by appointment? Why don't we just allow you to walk in to the consulate and apply for any consular services that you need? Kasi 'yan ang gusto natin sa Pilipinas yata. We want chaos. We don't want system. We don't want appointments, diba? Kailangan ko magwalk in kaagad, hindi na kailangan appointment. We have to do that because of the pandemic. We are not different from any other business in California that need to observe safety and health protocols imposed by the city government by the state. You know, for the, for the safety of the people. Kaya kailangan natin i-regulate 'yung bilang ng tao na pwedeng pumunta sa consulado per day. So we have to import or to, to set up an appointment system online, online. And you also have to remember that our consulate in LA is just a small space. We are just renting one half of the fifth floor of Equitable Bank Building on Wheelchair Boulevard. And that's so small space can only accommodate a total of seventy people at any given time. And alam niyo naman ang mga kinatawag na maximum occupancy allowed. If you are allowed to, to, to receive only seventy on any given, at any given time, you cannot exceed, exceed that limitation. Otherwise, pupuntan ka ng bar martial ng city government at C C Tahinka. So we have to follow these regulations. And then, beginning last May, we also started coming back, going out of LA for our, what we call the Consular Outreach Programs. Alam niyo, because of the pandemic last year, we couldn't go out of LA to render Consular Outreach Programs. And now, we are back to doing Consular Outreach Programs. We are now on our second Consular Outreach Program here in Arizona. And we will be coming back again here in November for our third and last outreach program here in Arizona. And then, aside from our Consular Outreach Program and increasing the number of slots, we are also doing Consular Saturdays. Idig sabihin, habang may nagtatrabaho sa labas na mga kasama ko sa Philippine Consulate outside of LA, meron din nagtatrabaho sa Los Angeles on a Saturday, rendering passport services. In fact, yesterday, while we were working here in Arizona, another team of the Philippine Consulate was busy in LA at the consulate doing the same service para sa ating mga kababayan. And, you know, to us, this is really going the extra mile because we are not being paid for what we are doing. Unlike you here, konting excess lang ng oras na tinabaho niyo, meron kayong overtime, diba? Sabi sa akin, 'yung mga Amerika, 'yung mga kababayan natin sa California, mayayaman 'yan. How much is your minimum wage here? Can I ask? Oh, mayaman kayo? Twelve, fifteen dollars, diba?
Isang sandwich?
And then, you, you work beyond the eight hour, uh, 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 minimum? Then you get paid more, diba? Kami, we work beyond the eight hour minimum number of hours required. We don't get paid because we are civil servants. We are civil servants. We'll do the Q and A later, my friend, okay? We are civil servants. Walang pa kami overtime. Go to the Philippine Consulate. We go out of LA, we go out to Arizona, we go to Las Vegas, we don't get paid overtime. And then on the next following day, working day, we have to report again to the consulate. Dahil bawal po sa amin magsabing hindi kami pwedeng pumas, because we are only thirty-six people at the Philippine Consulate in Los Angeles. Thirty-six consulate personnel serving one point three million Filipinos under our jurisdiction. Meaning, the ratio of one consulate personnel is one is to thirty thousand Filipinos. Can you imagine that? Ano ang ideal ratio sa isa klase?
At the Etto for that.
Para maganda 'yung absorption ng bata. One teacher is to thirty-five maximum students, diba? Eh, pag nilagay mo, isang teacher, thirty thousand students. May maranatay pa ba? Wala na, diba? That, what has been our responsibility. And so, sa mga kababayan natin, na nagsasabing ang consulado natin napakahina, napakainefficient, you have to remember that we are facing so many limitations. Your sheer number in Arizona alone, in Southern Nevada and in LA, you are one point three million Filipinos. And you want us to serve you all at the same time, not today, but yesterday. Ganun 'yan eh, no? And then, so may nagsabi sa akin, eh, kung kokonti pala kayo, Conjen, bakit hindi kayo magpadala ng five hundred people, staff from the Philippines? Why don't you move to a bigger space so that you can accommodate one thousand people per day? You know, these are very easy to suggest, to tell us, but very difficult to implement or to act upon. Why? Because this will require budgetary allocation from the Philippine government. And for us to be given more budget, we have to go before Congress. For Congress to approve more budget for two, for the operation of the Philippine Consulate General in Los Angeles. And for us to increase the number of our people at the consulate, we need to inform the US Department of State. Because the number of people that we can deploy to the Philippine Consulate in LA, to the Philippine Consulate in San Francisco, and to the Philippine Embassy in Washington DC is based on the principle of reciprocity. Kung ilan ang bilang ng mga tao ng US Embassy sa Pilipinas, ay dapat halos pareho lamang din ang bilang namin, okay? Reciprocity. So it's not as simple as saying that, okay, today, tomorrow, Philippine government will, will deploy five hundred more people to the Philippine Consulate in Los Angeles. Hindi ho ganon kasimple, okay? Now, the other thing that I'd like to talk about this afternoon is the upcoming elections. Philippine national elections next year. It'll be in May of next year. So what is it that you need to do as Filipinos or overseas Filipinos? You need to actively exercise your civic duties, foremost of which is your right of suffrage, which simply means the right to vote. Now I have to ask you, how many of you have already registered as overseas voters today? Sila yo lang. And check si Miss Gka. What about the others? You have not registered?
Edipo duos.
What happened? Binuksan namin ang overseas voting registration in December twenty nineteen until the end of September this month. And I'm just so, uh, a bit disappointed that I'm only seeing three hands being raised out of fifty people today here na nakapagreistro. What happened? Ano nangyari? Now, ganito ano? Okay, of course, if, if we have so different reasons why you're not able to register, what I'm saying is that the registration period is still open up to the end of September. So if you have not registered yet, please do so. You can walk in at the consulate anytime. You don't need an appointment. All you need to present is your Philippine passport, another proof that you're still a Filipino citizen, and that's it. You will be registered as a Filipino voter. It is very important for all of us Filipinos and Filipino Americans who are qualified to exercise this right of suffrage because the next few years will be very important to our country and to our government. It'll be a post-pandemic period. Your vote will determine the future of our country. I know that many of you have a lot of concerns, comments about what is happening back home. Ang Pilipinas napakaano talaga, ang hirap talaga. Kaya ako pumunta sa Amerika kasi wala. Ano kayo dyan? Inefficient? Ang gobyerno natin mahina. But you have to ask yourself, as a Filipino, as a Filipino American citizen, what are you doing? Are you even exercising your right of suffrage? Are you just sitting in your comfortable rooms? Just giving comments every now and then about what is happening back home? Hindi ata tama 'yun. You have the right to comment. We live in a democracy. Nobody is stopping you from airing your views about our government, our country. But please, before you say anything, you have to ask yourself, what have you done? Did you even bother to exercise your right of suffrage? Today, there are only three hands I saw being raised. Sir Leo, maraming salamat Leo. I salute you. Doctora, maraming salamat. And that other lady and the apat. It's very, uh, it's a bit, uh, frustrating because I have to tell you, in the, in the last elections, we have one point three million Filipinos in, under our jurisdiction. We're not saying that all of them are qualified voters, but I'm still assuming that a big portion of that population can vote. If only they will vote. But the voter turnout in the last election was only eight thousand. Napakaliit. Napakaliit, diba? So we need to increase that. You do something about it. An active and engaged citizen is an essential requisite with functioning democracy. Anywhere you go, we need to actively participate. Let's talk about the Philippine economy. Philippine economy, because of the pandemic, just like many other governments, the world over, we have also suffered. Tourism arrivals have declined by ninety-seven percent, ninety-seven percent. We used to receive one point four billion, uh, tourist arrivals of, almost on a quarterly basis. But for twenty twenty-one, we only received less than thirty thousand tourist arrivals. Medyo mapapayo because of the pandemic. And you know how much tourism can contribute to local economy, to the local economy? It's an excellent generator of employment, okay? So we're hoping that once the conditions improve, that we will be able to attract again tourism, tourist, foreign tourists to visit, revisit our country. And in that regard, I'd like to touch a bit upon the, to touch a bit upon the, uh, health protocols that we need to observe when you visit the country. I'm sorry to say that until today, if you visit the Philippines, you still need to observe the fourteen day quarantine period, ten days of which have to be spent in a quarantine facility, and the remaining four days will have to be spent at home, home quarantine. We have already vaccinated more than thirty million Filipinos. We still need to vaccinate additional number of Filipinos. The ideal number of Filipinos that we need to vaccinate is seventy million, seventy million. The ideal number of Filipinos that we need to vaccinate is 70 million, 70 million. And we are still only halfway through. But nevertheless, vaccines continue to arrive in the country. And in this connection, I'd like to commend COFAK here, led by Mr. Jerry Fallon and Ms. Helen Sampson, who are here with us today. They are into a campaign to save lives. They have a campaign to raise funds that will be donated to private parties in the Philippines for the purchase of more vaccines for Filipinos. So let's support COFAK. Thank you, Jerry, for doing that. And then, I think I'd like to finally talk about the political and security situation in the country. Many people have heard that, you know, do not visit the Philippines because there are too many guards there. But I have to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, that in recent surveys, and these are by reputable survey agencies, the Philippines remains to be one of the safest countries to visit in the world. It is. And of course, the Philippines has among the best tourism destinations in the world, right? But the most important of all is that the Philippines is home to the most beautiful women in the world.
Yeah, Miss Universe.
We are with them today, the real Filipinas, right? How many Miss Universe members do we have? There are many, right? Yeah, Gloria Diaz. Yeah, Ms. Bea Wordspack, right? Ms. Margie Morale, right? Who else? Katrina Bray, right? Ms. Priscilla here. That's Ms. Priscilla. You know, Ms. Priscilla. I have to, you know, I have to share a story with them, Priscilla. I hope you don't mind. You know, Ms. Priscilla, you saw her earlier. She looks so pretty, right? I didn't realize. I did some research about her, and I found out that she used to join beauty contests as well. And then I found out also that she was joining beauty contests since she was in primary school in the Philippines. So when she was in kindergarten, she joined and she won, except that she only was second runner-up. And then elementary school, she joined beauty contests, she won, but she was second runner-up again. And then elementary, high school, college, she was always second runner-up, Ms. Priscilla. So I was wondering why. So I asked her, why is she always second runner-up, because she never won first runner-up? Then she admitted to me, Conjen, because we always contest together. And then, I think the last item or information I'd like to share with you today is that, beginning on the last week of September in L.A., we will be opening an off-site passport renewal center independently of the Philippine consulate on Wilshire Boulevard. This is to give Filipinos an alternative option where to apply for passport renewal. So if you have difficulties applying at the Philippine consulate on Wilshire Boulevard, you can visit the website of this passport renewal center and you can apply there for passport renewal. These are your options. We'll be making more announcements on this passport renewal as the days go by, okay? So with that, I would like to close by once again thanking Mr. Edward Lago of PACA for the excellent preparation that you made for our visit. It was very well organized and the execution was simply superb. Bless you, Conjen. And I'd like to also thank all the Filipino organizations that supported this outing. I'll not mention names at all because the moment I forget one, it's all going to be a mess.
And Ms. Ethel Rosario. Ms. Ethel Rosario.
And Ethel Rosario, unfortunately, could not make it to join us today.
Yeah, she's here.
Oh, she's here, okay.
She's between, we are streaming live.
Oh, Ethel Rosario, I saw her. So thank you, Edward. And I hope that we will continue this kind of dialogue. I really requested that we have a town hall meeting because this is the way for us to keep you updated on what is happening back at the Philippine consulate in Los Angeles and what is happening back in the Philippines. Let's continue our dialogue. Let's have an open line of communication. If you can reach us directly, we have leaders here in Phoenix, you have Edward Lago, we have other groups here who are actively supporting the Philippine consulate. You can reach us anytime, okay? There is no difference that we cannot settle, okay? There is no disagreement that we cannot agree to settle, okay? So, in closing again, for those of you who are qualified to vote, please register. The right of suffrage is constitutionally guaranteed. It is in the Constitution, but it's not self-executing. What do I mean by that? You have to take positive action. And the first thing for you to do, if you are a Filipino residing in the United States, is to go out of your house and register as overseas voter so that next year, you will be able to cast your ballot, okay? So thank you, and we will have an open forum. So we are ready to take any questions from the floor. Let's try to maintain our dialogue civil and professional, okay? So thank you, Edward. Thank you.
Thank you, Conjen. Sorry, I sit here so I can catch you. Thank you. Mr. Edgar Badajos. I know you researched me all through the night. Yes, you tried to find out about me. So anyway, our next guest is Ms. Mary Jane Bardjos. She's past president of Philippine American Chamber of Commerce, and she's going to introduce the COFACC delegation and talk about the COFACC State Lives Project presentation. But before I do that, Ms. Ria of Buhay Buhay sa America says that you can stream your questions right now. She is actually doing the live streaming. So if you have questions, send it to her so the consulate general can address those questions. After what? After callback, yes. Okay, let's give a hand to Ms. Mary Jane Bardjos.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Mary Jane Bardjos. I'm the pastor of the PACA and also president of the Philippine American Support Team in Arizona. And greetings, Philippine Consul General Honorable Edgar B. Badajos. Welcome to Arizona and all the guests today and online and everyone here. And I would like to introduce our current mentor for the PACA. And let me tell you a little bit about him. And we are excited to have your mentor, our PAC organization. And I can see very well the edge is getting to me now. We're really practicing social distancing here. This, sorry, Jerry, is the founder, president of Coalition of Philippine American Chamber of Commerce, for short is COPEC. An umbrella organization of 24-partner chamber organizations nationwide. Jerry is formerly the president of the Philippine American Chamber of Commerce of Greater Los Angeles in 2015 and 2017. Before he became the founder, president of COPEC, Jerry hold two master's degrees with distinction award, MBA from the Asian Institute of Management, and a Master of Accounting and Finance Management from the Keller Graduate School in Management, Dubra University. Jerry has a Bachelor in Art degree in economics cum laude from the University of Santa Tomas. Currently, he works full-time as a fully licensed securities registered representative of Western and Southern Life Insurance Company, a Fortune 500 financial services firm dealing with life insurance, retirement solution, and financial investments. Prior to moving to the U.S. in 2008, Jerry came from successful general management, career-leading various major fast food chain in the Philippines for 28 years. Professionally, Jerry has been accepted in 2021 as a qualifying member of the Million Dollars Roundtable Club, a prestigious worldwide recognition for outstanding financial professionals achieving high sales performance in the financial service field in 2020. He also currently belong to the top 10 financial representatives of Western and Southern Life Insurance Company and getting into its prestigious President's Council and Premier Group. His great passion, work ethics, and lifestyle are centered around bringing back to the community whatever he has achieved in life capitalizing from his wealth of experience in the corporate business world. Please allow me to welcome Jerry Malone.
Thank you, Abby. MJ. Hi, good morning, everyone. And thank you very much for, again, for giving us the opportunity the second time around now. We have been here in May 2021 when we relaunched the brand of PACA. As a chamber organization, we're supporting PACA. PACA is one of our newest chambers of commerce in the Coalition of Philippine American Chamber of Commerce. And also, I'd like to thank Conjen Ed Badajos for endorsing us as well as for acknowledgement of what we are doing now for the Filipino-American community, which we are privileged to make a short presentation. But before we do that, I'd like to introduce the members, the officers of our Coalition of Philippine American Chambers of Commerce who are with me right now. And we drove all the way from California yesterday to be here with you guys. So first, I'd like to call the president also of FACC Foundation Inc. and a founding board member of the Coalition of Philippine American Chamber of Commerce, Ellen Sampson. Ellen is a serial entrepreneur, running three companies, and a visionary community leader with lots of accomplishments stuck under her belt. And as a community leader, Ellen is also very part of the founding board members and now a successful national organization. And yeah, Ellen, can I call you on to help me in the presentation later? And the second, the third one in COFAK is our corporate communications director, Ms. Tina Salonga Bulchan. She has a very diverse background in business, marketing, and run profit management spanning over 20 years. She's a visionary leader who has successfully managed multiple startup companies locally and abroad and helped sustain several Filipino-American nonprofit orgs in Los Angeles. Respected for her passion to helping organizations innovate, thrive, and grow by creating value-added programs, training, and mentoring. Tina is experienced in strategic organizational development, events management, fundraising, grant writing, education and training, as well as financial management of federal, local, and private fund resources. She used to be the interim executive director for Philamarts as well as the director for programs and services of Search to Involve Filipino-Americans. So Tina, welcome. You're welcome here. And also, the fourth one is our board member from Philippine American Chamber of Commerce in Hollywood. He's helping us to distribute the brochures. So with that, I'd like to start with our presentation. Welcome to the town hall presentation, Save Lives to Make Vaccines the Philippines Project. We all know for a fact that there's a lot of Filipinos dying or getting infected with COVID-19. And we are pretty in a better shape here in the U.S. We have sufficient stocks of vaccines. We have, and then more so, you know, we have the privilege to decline of being vaccinated. But in the Philippines, only 14%. Ellen will be explaining this later in the slides. And we launched our donation project in August 10, 2021. When we went live, we had this MOU signing to kick off the campaign. And this is not only done in California, but the entire United States. All the Philippine American Chambers of Commerce were all present during that MOU signing. And also, our Philippine counterpart organizations, PCCI, Philexport, and ECO, Employers Confederation of the Philippines. And we will skip that slide anymore. Just take my hands. We composed actually two songs, but they're only playing one song for today in the interest of time. So a brief background of COFAK. We were organized as an umbrella organization of Philippine American Chambers of Commerce all over the country in 2018. So it's a three-year-old organization. We started with five. And in three years' time, when we celebrated our third-year anniversary last May, we are already 24. And we are very glad and we are very happy that FACC Arizona joined us under the leadership of Edward Lago and all the board of directors. And yeah, our mission as an organization is really to provide best practices, sharing of best practices among the chambers, provide resources, mentorship, training. And we do this on a monthly basis. We have a training program that is open and, you know, we invite all board members of PACA to join us every third Saturday virtual. It's a training program that we provide for chamber leaders. And once a month as well, we have executive board meetings to make sure that everyone in the organization are kept attuned to whatever we are doing as an organization in COFAK. And these are all the chamber organizations that we have, 19 chambers and five community organizations. These are strategic partners that provide vital support to the Coalition. Next slide, please. And about FACC Foundation, I would call on Ms. Ellen Sampson to introduce what FACC Foundation is all about.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We are honored to be in front of you, joining you today. FACC Foundation is a 501(c)(3) organization that helps communities, not just in California, but all over the U.S. See, for example, because most chambers of commerce have restrictions because they are 501(c)(6). They can't accept grants unless... They can't accept grants unless you have grandfathered from, because before IRS is not so strict. Some chambers of commerce still have the (c)(3) because they were able to maybe get it before. But right now, they're kind of strict. So if we, there's an organization that wants to do something that's nonprofit, particularly chambers of commerce, the FACC Foundation is actually the way to go. So you can accept big grants and big projects. And all the donations will be tax deductible. We are actually the, FACC Foundation, we call it the heart of our business. It's not all about business. There should be a heart. And FACC Foundation is the educational and charitable arm of every Filipino-American organization. We would like to work with everybody after this. Because this is what we're doing right now. We become the fiscal agent and we try to help. So hopefully, we could be of help to you and we could make a difference. That's the reason why Save Lives is through the Foundation. Thank you. Save lives. You know, way back when this was happening, there are two reasons, the inspiration actually went with Save Lives. Particularly me, when I was getting my first vaccine in February, I thought, I'm just so happy, I should be happy. I should be happy I'm getting that dose. But the first time they gave me that vaccine, I was so lonely. It is because I'm getting this, how about my family? How about my loved ones? That actually went into my mind, but I didn't say anything. I said, I can't do it. I can't, I mean, we need to do something about it. And then came PhilPro. I don't know if you've heard about PhilPro? PhilPro started, and the other organizations started, you know what, making some noise in Congress, like you have to release this vaccine the Philippine government bought from you before. And they were like so doing the loving. And we said, if they're doing it, why not us? So we went to the drawing board. We simplified what we were dreaming and we worked with PCCI, the Philippine Chamber of Commerce and Industry, our counterpart in the Philippines. They're a very prestigious group. All businesses in the Philippines, legit businesses, are members of PCCI. And we worked with them and they said, if we could do something about it. And then one day, Save Lives was born. It is not to campaign for anything. It's just like, what's the concept of Save Lives? We go, we get our vaccines here. We're a little bit better here. But right now, if I could get to next slide, look at this. If you go to the Reuters graphics every day, how many infections? How many? And one of those who have been infected would be a family, a friend. I have a business in the Philippines and half of my staff have COVID. We have friends, we don't want to open Facebook. But here, we can do something about it. We are just requesting, if you take a look, that's the average case. That was before, that's not updated. Right now, I think it's going to around 30,000 a day. This is not updated, but this could be the family that we have in the Philippines. We can't, the others are saying, oh, you know what? How can you send it to your kamakana? It would be a logistical nightmare, but if you look at the Save Lives, it's not meant to really send somebody. But go to sleep at night that you donated something. You cannot send vaccines through a blip buying box. You cannot send your vaccines through remittance. The only way we can get it is through a collective purchase that we can make and donate it to the Philippines. We're not even buying the vaccines ourselves. We have to go through the Philippines because the vaccines are already there. And PCCI will undertake that. So with this, maybe next slide, please. The part, that's the project overview. We would like to purchase it through PCCI, not through us. If you look at the flies that we sent to you, we're not going, there's a, how do you call that? The link that you could get, the QR code, we're asking for $25 only for one vaccine. One $25 could buy a burger or could buy just whatever. Sometimes you even dip that in the restaurants. But maybe one $25 could make a difference. It will not, we're not asking tens of thousands, but if you have people who could help us, you know? So maybe you could always consult our website and make amends out there. Okay, and our target is 203,000 and 10,000 vaccines. Period of campaign is August 10 to 25 December. Next slide. And I would like to call Mr. Palong for the frequently asked questions.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. We'll do this quickly in the interest of time. But these are the commonly asked questions of our kababayan. How will the cost donations be handled after the termination of the project? So as we mentioned, that we have beneficiary organizations in the Philippines of three organizations, PCCI, ECO, and Philexport. They have employees who are, you know, really marginalized, they're very poor. And they cannot, you know, be given access to the vaccines. And they are deployed in various parts of the country. And most of the vaccinations now done in the Philippines are concentrated in the greater Metro Manila area. Next slide, please. And who are the recipients? Okay, I already answered that. Can we go next to that slide, please? So what brands are vaccines will be purchased by PCCI? There are the top brands on the list of PCCI are AstaZeneca, Pfizer, Moderna, and J&amp;J Vaccines. PCCI, in collaboration with COFAK and FACC Foundation, will explore the possibility of purchasing from COFAK's facility for the Save Lives vaccine. We'll be helping them. Okay, next slide, please. And who will administer the vaccination procedures? So PCCI will determine the right agency to administer the vaccination process for their marginalized workers. Most likely, it will gonna be the Red Cross. Next slide, please. Okay, so what guidelines will be used by PCCI? Okay, we will follow the framework used by the Philippine National Deployment and Vaccination Plan as adopted from the universal framework formulated by the World Health Organization, or WHO Strategic Advisory Group of Experts, or SAES, on immunization policies and procedures. Next slide, please. And how much can I donate as an individual? It was already mentioned by Ella, $25 per denomination. But the local chambers like Paka can also do their own fundraising if you want to donate smaller than $25. We will just pull this all together under Paka. And you know, Paka will remit that to the FACC Foundation. Next slide, please. How and where do I give my donation? Dito sa slas, sa brochure, you can just scan the barcode. And it will directly put you into the direct link with our website. Or you can send your check to Edward Lago of Paka.
You just got the first 500.
Okay, I want to make a very nice announcement here. Thank you, Ms. Ethel Sario, to kick off the campaign for FACC Arizona, $500.
Thank you, Aunt Ethel.
Thank you, Ms. Ethel. Okay, next slide. Okay, we will just share with you a very short video of a song that was composed by Ellen and sung by an artist in LA. Okay, this is a very beautiful song, very touching.
Thank you very much, Ned Brazila. Few seconds, we'll open up for a question and answer.
Okay, let me introduce Mr., can you go first? Let me introduce Mr. Leo Arumee. He is the only publisher of the one and only real newspaper here in Arizona. He actually promotes Filipino businesses and actually shares with us the real things that's going on in the Philippines. It's good news, it's real news, it's not fake news. And now he is, let, here's Mr. Leo Arumee.
Thank you very much, Brazila. And by the way, on the sideline, I'm one of the founders of the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Arizona. And maybe ask the Honorable Consul General to be on this or question and answer. If you have some questions, write it down, or I can go to your place and use this microphone. But anyway, we have a first question here. I have written questions from the audience. Can we use this?
Dito naman ako ngayon. Oh, nasan ba si Ongjen?
Okay. Well, she's not here anymore, but there is. I'm becoming emotional because of that lady. There's one Filipino J1 visa holder, but her visa has expired already. And she's diagnosed with stage four cancer. And she needs help. And of course, the Filipino community, especially the leadership of Macbeth Tono and the rest of the members of the community has been focusing together and coming up with some funds and help for this lady. She was here a while ago, but she went home already. Sir, so our question is, ask a. Sorry. How can the consulate help her? Yeah, it's a Filipino whose J1 visa has expired and suffering from stage four cancer. Matter of fact, pinudun na po 'yung kanyang paa. And she's being helped by members of the Filipino community, press with funds.
Yes, thank you very much, Leo. I think I heard about the lady, the story last night from the Filipino Nurses Association. And from what I understand, that they have already referred her also to a immigration lawyer to work on her papers here in the US. On the financial assistance, what we can do is to refer her also to the Department of Foreign Affairs. I was going to mention during my presentation that at the consulate, we do not just process passports all. You might think, what we do at the consulate is process passports. We do other things, a lot of things, actually. We have what we call the Assistance to Nationals Section. And that Assistance to Nationals Section handles two funds, what we call the Assistance to Nationals Fund and the Legal Assistance Fund. Etong case, the name is Rosell. He refer that in Manila. But you have to give us a request with all the supporting documents. And what do I mean by that supporting document? We need the medical certificates. Okay, because she now falls under what we call an Assistance to Nationals case. So that she will qualify for a financial assistance from Manila. Meron tayo, if you are talking of a universe of overseas Filipinos, meron dyan mga tinatawag OFS, Overseas Filipino Workers, or OFWUs. Ito 'yung mga pronounces ng POEA, ang kanilang papeles. They are really technically what we call the OFWUs. The rest who didn't go through POEA are just overseas Filipinos. And when they go into any problem overseas, like here in California, in Arizona, or in southern Nevada, they fall under what we call the Assistance to Nationals Cases. And they have to be assisted by the Philippine consulate. Yung mga OFWUs na dumaan sa POEA, they have to be assisted by our Labor Atashen, who represents the Secretary of Labor. Okay, so yung mga hindi dumaan ang POEA katulad probably ni Rosell, kasi J1 visa holder siya eh.
Yes.
So she has to be referred to the Philippine consulate. And we have to recommend that she be provided financial assistance through the Assistance to Nationals Fund, being handled by the Department of Foreign Affairs. Pagdating sa kanyang visa situation, hindi po natin 'yun pwedeng pakialaman. The most that we can do is to also, if hindi pa inagawa, is to refer her to an immigration lawyer. But we cannot provide assistance financially for her immigration issue. Because we are not allowed to intercede. Because we are not allowed to intercede as Filipino diplomats, to intercede on behalf of third parties to regularize their immigration status in the United States. What we can do is help her with her medical situation by requesting financial assistance from the Philippines. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So whichever organization is helping Ms. Rossel, I saw, I met with them last night. Please try to approach us before we leave for LA tomorrow. Submit to us a request with a passport of Ms. Rossel, medical certificates, and then we will endorse it to Manila.
Okay. Somebody check in with Mrs. Macbeth Torno or anybody of you, the PNAC, the Mother's Affairs, and the rest in accordance with the request of Consul General Badajos, in order that he can help. Okay, and another question here, sir, is... For those contract workers or overseas workers who are disabled or no longer able to work, what type of benefits or health insurance are available to them? Perhaps you have answered that already, but clarification perhaps there?
Yeah. Again, I go back to my earlier statement that you have to be a member of O-A. If you are a Filipino worker, you were processed by POEA. And if you are a regular paying member of O-A, then you're entitled to certain benefits. As you're not able to work anymore, you're entitled to apply for loans for your family's stability or likely for homes or possible business in the Philippines. But if you are an undocumented Filipino worker here, papasa ko link sa tinatawag nating Assistance to Nationals Section. We can only provide you probably a one-time financial assistance, but it depends, it depends on the nature of your problem. Okay, you.
Alright. Well, somebody give this to me, but it looks like, it looks like an immigration issue. But anyway, it says here, how do we bring my nieces, nephews, and brother here in the US to get a working visa? But no, I'm not an immigration consultant, cinema immigration consultant. No, it's beyond that, sorry, I cannot answer that, thank you. So, here's another one here, I don't know if the consul can answer this too because it involves about, if you watch the news in the Philippines about COVID-19 here, whether they changed the rules ever now and then. A question here, why is the swabbing test for COVID not free? The workers need to have a COVID test once a month before they can come back to work?
I don't know why. Really, I cannot answer you why we charge for the swab test. Because you have to understand that most of those that are giving the swab test are private health institutions. So they charge for the services. We are not as wealthy as the US government. And that is why we encourage groups like the group of Mr. Jerry Paldon here for undertaking this kind of campaign to raise funds for the acquisition of vaccines. Now more than ever, it is time to send assistance to the Philippines. Although tuloy-tuloy na 'yan ang pagdating ng mga vaccines in Philippines, we already paid for several supplies of vaccines through the COVAX facility, and they continue to arrive.
So in relation to that, there's another one here related to that question. It says, my question is, if our kababayan are going back to the Philippines, already have COVID requirements, spend so much money on testing and COVID shots, why are they still have to require more importantly quarantine if they are in the Philippines?
It's more of a desire to really protect you and the community that you are joining in the Philippines to avoid spread of infection. Although you may have already been vaccinated in the Philippines or here in the United States, you can still contract the infection, and we have already seen that in so many cases. For a period of 10 days, and then on the 10th day, you will be released. You'll be allowed to go home and spend four days in your home for home quarantine. It's not to punish you, but it's for your own protection and of your family too. What we call the parent's responsibility, responsibility of the state, of the citizens of the country. And because of this magnitude of the pandemic back home, it has been the decision of the government to impose these health protocols. It's for the protection of everybody. Let me tell you. And yet despite that, they still contracted the disease. And really, this is a very serious issue. It's a very serious problem wherever you are. You know, there's a friend of our Secretary of Foreign Affairs. They came from Manila, family. They came to visit California only two weeks ago. The mother, the mother contracted COVID here in the United States, and she died last month. And our number one partner is to help the family to repatriate. No one is safe, in other words.
Thank you. Okay. It says here, you talk about dual citizenship and others during the end here, a question. Sir, can you cite other advantages of being a dual citizen other than the voting privilege?
Yes, of course. I was talking to Brazil again last night, and she said, I'm not here to be a dual citizen, but I'd like to buy hectares and hectares of land in the Philippines. Para gagawin kong investment when I retire from Arizona. So I asked her, are you ready to be a dual citizen? Sabi niya, hindi pa. Then you cannot buy. You have to be a Filipino citizen again to buy lands in the Philippines, Brazil. Okay? And of course, if you want to practice a profession that's only reserved for Filipino citizens, lawyering, you have to feel it to be a Filipino, right? And if one of you wakes up one day between today and May 9, and decides that he is the savior of the Philippines and therefore he will run for the president of the Philippines, you have to be a Filipino citizen. But if you run for an elective office in the Philippines after becoming a dual citizen, you have to renounce your American citizenship. Okay? So if Leo Arumee wakes up tomorrow and says, I feel that I can save the Philippines. I will run for the presidency on May 9, he has to become a dual citizen, citizen first, before he will do that.
But I'm not a citizen yet.
Oh, it's a permanent question. Thirty-one years ko na rito sa America.
And in relation to one other question here, Dr. Zapanta will ask the question because I cannot tweet your handwriting answers. I'm kidding.
A dual citizen visiting the Philippines, and there is a sudden emergency, American citizen, a question, is the visiting individual considered a Filipino or Nasa?
You know what problema, but it's become really an interesting situation. Because here you have several individuals who at one point in their life said, I'd like to become an American citizen. And then biglang tumating ang ating dual citizenship law. And they decide also, one day, na magisang Filipino. And then dumating situation na nagkaroon sila ng problema, like in the Philippines. Kadi na sila tatakbo, sa American government or sa Philippine government? I can't tell you, they will run to the Philippine government. You know why? This is based on my experience. We are probably the only government in the world that provides so many free fees to our Filipino citizens overseas. We are probably the only government in the world that pays for the repatriation of its own Filipino citizens, freely. In the Middle East, I was in the Middle East for three years. We repatriated close to 10,000 Filipinos. If you are a Filipino citizen, and you approach the Philippine government, even if you're already an American citizen, but you decide to run to the Philippine government, we will help you. We had an experience when I was in Bangkok, Thailand. There was massive flooding in Bangkok, Thailand. There was a couple, an American husband and a Filipino wife. They were affected by the massive flooding in Thailand. Sa Philippine Embassy in Bangkok. We housed them, we fed them for one month, free of charge. The US government never visited their own American citizen. I tell you, Medicare, you have Medicare here, but if you read the website of Medicare, it will tell you that if you travel overseas and you run into problems, get sick overseas, the Medicare will not pay for your medical expenses, only in highly exceptional cases. If you die overseas, the Medicare, the US government will not pay for the repatriation of your body back to the US. It is your obligation if you go out of the United States as a citizen to procure your own insurance policy, an extra policy to cover your medical and repatriation expenses, because Medicare will not pay for that. But if you are a Filipino citizen, and you travel abroad, and you get sick, or you die, or something happens to you, you run to the US or the Philippine consulate or embassy, we will help you. Because we have the Assistance to Nationals Fund amounting to 1 billion pesos per annum. We have the Legal Assistance Fund amounting to 13 billion pesos per annum that is earmarked specially for overseas Filipinos to help you if you run into problems. No other government in the world does it, it's only the Philippine government does it.
Yay, nice. In relation to that, sir, therefore, somebody here, well, this person who wrote this question perhaps has already been an American citizen, and therefore he said, how do you renounce a US citizenship?
How do you renounce your US citizenship? Is you go to a US consulate if you're overseas and execute an oath of renunciation?
How about, how do you renounce your Filipino citizenship? Is that correct?
Or your Filipino citizenship? You take a oath, just saying that you're renouncing your Filipino citizenship.
Will he go or she go to the...
You have to, before the Philippine consulate and say, I renounce my Filipino citizenship. But if you renounce your Filipino citizenship, please go to the US government and ask for help, not ask anyone.
Oh, sounds clear. If you wanted to renounce your Filipino citizenship, you go to the Philippine consulate and before the Consul General to renounce your citizenship. But your blood flowing in your body is Filipino.
You know, ang mga Filipino, wherever you go, even if you already become a citizen of another country, I know that you remain a Filipino at night.
Yes.
I know that you already heard this. You may bring the Filipino out of the Philippines, but you can never take the Philippines out of the heart of a Filipino.
Okay, another, sir, you mentioned a while ago that you are serving 1.3 million Filipinos in your jurisdiction, South California, Ibadan, California. And therefore, here's a question coming from the group there. He said, do you foresee having a consular office in Arizona? Maribel too answered that.
But you know, this is a very difficult question. Because to open a consulate outside of LA requires a lot of processes that need to be complied with. First and foremost, we need to request permission of the US government. Whether or not they will allow us to open consulate also in Arizona. Back in Saudi Arabia, alam niyo po Saudi Arabia, meron tayong embassy sa Riyadh. Meron tayong consulado sa Queda, where it was assigned. At meron, yun lang dalawa. Maraming Filipino sa tinatawag ng eastern region of Saudi Arabia, Qubar and Dammam. There are probably around 500,000 Filipinos in that place, is very far from Riyadh, which covers Qubar and Dammam. And the Filipinos in that area of Saudi Arabia have been clamoring that we also open a consulate in Qubar or Dammam. Until today, hindi po natin nagagawa. Tayo gusto hin natin magpapas na dun, to ready the funds allocated for that. But the Saudi government refuses to open, for us to open consulate in Dammam and Qubar until today. Ganun din yun, we have first and foremost to seek the permission of the US Department of State para huwag makapagkukot tayo ng consulado dito sa Arizona.
Okay, thank you, sir. And here's another question, I know that it's not within your jurisdiction, but it says here, did you know that the American Border Patrol in Seattle, Washington is targeting Filipinos with visitors visa?
I cannot answer, I'm not an American. There's somebody who wants to answer.
No, it's the person who asked the question.
Oh, you asked the question. I don't know, I cannot answer you, sir, I'm sorry about that. But maybe you can enlighten the people here.
You can use this.
My own hablo. My own hablo. My name is Brian Julian, and I just came from the Philippines. I've been affiliated with the Philippines for over four years. I'm a nobody. But in my community, I live in Bulacca, Cebu, Philippines. They call me Doctor Julian. Funny story, but I won't go into it, but I have a certificate that says I am a doctor in the Philippines. My wife, wonderful woman. The gentleman was right, the most beautiful woman in the world come from the Philippines. I'm a Filipino stuck in a white loom spot. And my friends will tell you I'm more Filipino than most. My wife held a visitor's visa for a reason. Mama lives in the Philippines, daddy lives in Las Vegas, he's in Las Vegas. Okay. We have the most beautiful little full am baby. Her name is Serenity Faith Hope Julian. She was born on 9/11 of May in Gilbert, Arizona. So she is an Arizonian. My wife is an awesome Filipino, hardworking. And I, and I'm not, I apologize for taking your time. The Philippine government is so wonderful. We had to make an emergency exit in 2020 beginning. And they welcomed me and my daughter, gave us one free year, one free year. And then it happened to pandemic. We won't go into that. So, my friends, my wonderful friends. Question set, I'm getting to it. I'm gonna let you know that the American government, the Border Patrol in Seattle, Washington, is targeting Filipinas with visitor's visas. They are working so hard to get here, to here to visit their sick family or whatever. And I want you to know that they're targeting them. They're interrogating them like prisoners. Two and a half hours, they interrogated my wife. Three agents, one of them was a Filipino. Held a green card. "Why did you have your baby in the United States?" They asked her. "Why is this, why is that?" And I want my fellow Filipino families here to know that this government is targeting Filipinas with visitor's visas. And I will close with this. "If you fly into Mexico, you cross the border there." Quote-unquote, I have called senators, congressmen, and whoever. And sir, you're affiliated with the group, and I appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, I need you all to know that if you know somebody with a visitor's visa, beware of Seattle, Washington.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
And that day, within three hours, they sent her back to Manila, where she stayed 10 days in a hotel with a two-year-old baby. And that was tough enough. Salaman.
Thank you, Doctor J.
Thank you, salamat sa'yo. Any other question, but another question here. Sir, what resources are available for Filipinos in the US when they go back to the Philippines? I don't know what's the, what's the... They have 7,100 islands. Me too. What resources are available for us in the Philippines when you go there? Is that the answer, the question? I don't know. Another question, Lonny is, Lonny here is an officer. Lonny Patubo is holding that microphone over there. Do you have a question about the celebration of Filipino-American society?
Maybe, I'll just read one question that was given through Rhea earlier. It's about the quarantine process when you enter the Philippines. I'll have to inform you, effective September 1, that when you travel to the Philippines, you have to get a health pass by registering online. And the web line, the website to get the pass, can you write it down please? Kung pa kami nang pagbabakasyon sa'yo, onehealthpass.com.vh. Onehealthpass.com.vh. Dot com dot v h. Kailangan po 'yung magrehisto down, then you will be able to bring out a a pass, so that when you arrive at any airport in the Philippines, international of course, you will be asked to present the pass, and then you will be allowed entry into the Philippines. And also, you will be asked to mention your pre-booked hotel, a quarantine facility, where you will be staying for 10 days. And then, on the 10th day, you will be allowed to leave the hotel and go to wherever you are going. Okay, so onehealthpass.com.vh. Kailangan niyo po yun. Anyone who travels to the Philippines effective September 1, Sarah. Yes, 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 para sa lahat, para sa lahat. Regardless of your vaccination status here in the US.
Yeah, yes, come on here. Maria. Marie Bonderie. Miss Manila.
Oh, Miss Manila, wow. Manila. That is your decree, Manila, is it?
I am an American passport holder. Do I need a visa to go to the Philippines?
As of now, yes.
Where do we get it?
Our consulate. But we need, no, you were a Filipino, right? Oh, you can go back as a balikbayan. As a balikbayan, provided you can still present a copy of your old Philippine passport or a copy of your birth certificate, you can enter as a balikbayan. You don't need a visa. As a balikbayan, you can stay in the Philippines for one year.
So you just need an old passport if it's expired?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. Yeah, yeah. Balikbayan ka. Yeah, no, either or, either or.
Okay, so your old passport expired for 20 years?
Anong name niya nun? Marie Bonderie. Anong, siya yata 'yung second contestant, dalat na si Maria. Siya ang first contender. Nah, oh, I'm sorry.
Maribel, yes, please come over. Maribel here, sir, is the president of the uniform of Phoenix Lions Club without orders. Soon enough, we will be forming the Lions Club with orders.
Actually, I'm the incoming president for FCA also, which is the oldest Filipino club in Arizona. But my question is in regards to being quarantined or when you go back home. We do medical missions. Like by the beach or something like that.
Yeah, you can.
And but I've heard you have to be inside your room.
Yes, that's true. I have experienced, uh, when I, when I visited the Philippines last year, I was in a hotel for a week, and I couldn't go out, I just have to...
Okay.
But I have to tell you again, ladies and gentlemen, yun ho ang ginagawa ng ating pamahalaan. Ah, hindi yun ay sa Pilipinas lama, hindi lang tayong gumagawa. It's not unique to the Philippines. In fact, our overseas Filipino workers are, are in a very lucky position. Because if you travel to other Asian countries, they follow the same 14-day protocol. Hindi lang Pilipinas ang gumagawa. You travel to Thailand, you travel to Indonesia, you travel to Malaysia, you travel Singapore. They follow the same 14-day quarantine protocol, and they pay for everything. But if you are an overseas Filipino worker, registered with P O A and is an O A member, the Philippine government will once again pay for your hotel quarantine facility. Napakabahay ng ating pamahalaan.
Yes.
We are the only government in the world that's doing it. We are probably the most compassionate government in the world.
Okay, I know that we are only allowed to stay here at 5 o'clock. It's about 4 minutes before 5, correct? And we'll have a picture-taking by groups with the contingent afterwards, with the permission of Dr. Pam Zapata, who is in charge of this big hall. Okay. One last question, please, one last question, but this one. Go straight to the point, come on here.
We know that, I am intrigued now with becoming a dual citizenship. Dual citizen is not of voting and kind stuff. But then, I want to convince my family to be a dual citizen also, but then they have the advantages. Can you mention, based on your experience as a consul general in New York and here, what benefit as a US citizen would I lose? Or would I be, would I not be able to take advantage of if I will become a dual citizen so that I will be proactively seeking a solution for that?
Ang tanong ang sabot ko, singgala. When you become a dual citizen, whilst also dual, meaning you're a remaining American citizen, you have everything to gain, nothing to lose. Nothing to lose, that's the simple answer. Everything to gain, own properties in the Philippines, practice your profession in the Philippines, run a business in the Philippines. Nothing to lose, they will not penalize you here in the US. Although I know that one paper, America discourages dual citizenship. But they know that it's been happening left and right, and they don't do anything about it. They don't punish you. Chris Wexton is a holder of street citizenship, he's still James Bond of London, the newest.
Okay, bonus, one last question. After this, I will not entertain anymore. Anyway, during the another month, back the time boy, I'm still here and ask questions.
So this is actually a question and ask for help with the honorable counsel. Actually, there was a gentleman that passed away during COVID, and he was cremated. We need help in trying to get his ashes home, his remains home. What can the Consular Office do in order to help us get his remains to the Philippines?
Sino pa, meron pa siyang next of kin dito?
Wala po.
Wala, sino ang tumutulong?
Maribel.
Si Maribel mo kang beauty contestant, si Maria.
Yes, talos lang po.
Siya ang third contestant.
Yeah, I have a, actually, I just helping them, I heard that they are in the hospital. It's not totally husband and wife, but the husband was passed away because of the COVID. They are not living in Arizona, they are in San Diego. But what, what I was heard, I helping them cremated, because there's no family at all in here. But all the families in Malawan are delivered in Manila. So, but it's the ashes still here, and then they said they hired an attorney from the Manila. Actually, I have some consulate, they called me, they left the message. When I called them back, they did not reply to me, I can't play the message, maybe you know this? But the ashes still here.
Uh, what you can do is do, if you have time tomorrow or today, you can talk to my staff at the Holiday Inn. Para mapuha namin 'yung detalya na napagpadala na kayo ng request of consulate.
Uh, no.
Oh, you have to do that, ganitong gawin natin, the process.
I don't know the process, no.
Oh, ito ngayon. We can talk about it after this, okay? Ang process for us to first contact the next of kin in the Philippines, because they have to go to the nearest office in T A P. Para siguradong ang bangkay or ang remains na ipapadala ay upun sa tamang pamilya. Because we know, alam natin, sometimes yung palang namatay, of course, hindi natin sabay. May naiwan palang maraming asawa sa Pilipinas.
Actually, that's the main reason, that's why I am holding it, because they have a girlfriend in here. And there is a big family in the Philippines that I can release the ash to her. So, I discovered all the expenses just to hold on me.
See, I was right, right?
That's the only problem.
We have to be very careful, kahit ang bangkay na yun, we have to make sure, number one, that we are releasing the remains to the right family. Because the disease may have left behind several properties. Magkaagawan na yan, right? Uh, kasi may mga ano yan, mortuary certificate yan. And then we have to issue a certain document from the consulate. What I'll do, Maribel, is I'll ask somebody to talk to you on the process. This is also what we are now doing for the remains of the Filipino who died last week from COVID. Ire-repatriating bangkay nya, meron upunin na mortuary certificate, may upunin kong dokumento sa consulate para mahihi 'yung remains, 'yung ashes. Okay, to the right family. What I have to send us, a request, yung tamang asawa sa Pilipinas, upun na sa T A P. Ang marami ba, siya ang problema.
Okay, this gentleman is the head of consul general in Galipadajos. And of course, we'll have to request you for a picture-taking. But in behalf of the paka and copa, we'd like to thank all members and officers of the different organizations who are present here. And here's a last word from Priscilla Chesler, the always number two in beauty pageant.
But number one, her...
Sorry, for everyone, we were talking about the saved lives for the vaccine donations. It's $25 per vaccine. If you would like to donate, we have Ms. Josel, Ms. Earth Queen, Treasurer Paka, please coordinate with her. And we also have this for donations, so please, share any amount that you could share.
There's Ms. Josel.
I wanted to remind everyone that the next Consular Outreach is happening in November, which will be led by the Council of Filipino Organizations of Arizona, headed by Madam President Alma de Garis. If you have, if you have a need, what the Consular Group has offered the package, check the website, alma. That Philippine consulate, L A dot com. Please note that you have to apply online. Because they are very strict, and they encourage all applicants to submit their applications online, and they will be given an appointment. Thank you, everyone, good afternoon, have a good day, and take care, God bless you all.
Okay, please, Alma, Chairman of the Council of Filipino Organizations, come over here for picture-taking, everybody. And they are yet deciding on the specific date of the November Consular Outreach. Not yet. Bigay mo 'yung email mo sa kanya. Rialus donated $1,000. No, I'm kidding. Okay, picture-taking, please. A group picture, please, let's do, uh, three, three groups. Para hindi masaya ng marami.
Pwedeng pwede rin, marami kuya.
Marami lahat, one time?
Yeah, one time. Each group and then...
Please.
Marami lahat, tapos na sa isang group.
Kasi, may napauwi na tayo.
Picture, picture.
Picture!
Iba pa tayo, iba pa tayo.
Maybe with mask. Wear a mask. Yeah, yeah.
Si Kuy, si Kuy, si Kuy, si Kuy.
No, 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 it's okay.
Talaga may dipot.
Second bro.
Thank you, sadomasay.
Kamikantyan ba? Ah, kamikantyan.
Ah, magpicture, hindi mo magpicture. Halon. Tanongin natin si Ano, si Ano, si Ano, hindi pa rin kasama ni Ano, di ko alam. Yeah. Ay, ang ganda natin. Nako, tataka. Thank you, siya kuya.
One more, one more. Okay. Next group, last group.
Last group.
Last group.
Thank you, kuya Kristina. Thank you to ya, Chris, to ya, Chris, isa pa kayo.
Ay, paka lang, paka member only. Paka, paka. Paka member. Paka then we go, then we go back after. Paka member. Of course.
Hey, Wen, kasi mga beauty queen to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Begin na. Kofa, kofa, Jerry, with kofa. Many times in the way. Jerry, Jerry Allen.
Thank you.
All they do. Ms Arizona naman, good and Ms Arizona.
Ah, excuse me po. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Oh, betso.
Wapo.
Ay, ulit, paka. Ah, one more time, paka, please. Paka, one more time, paka. Hindi na complete. All paka, all paka, all paka. One last, one last. One last. And then si Oscar, Oscar. Sarah, paka, paka, Oscar. Yung maganda dito. Huwag kang magat niya.
Naka-bijie po tayo.
Thank you. Okay. Galing mo talaga. Sir, one last daw itong Without Borders.
Siyempre, walang event, pag walang picture. Kuya, madam, kaya.
Okay.
Thank you, so, sir, I really enjoyed what you said about Philippines. So thank you for your love for our country.
Go Philippines.
Yeah, and your name, sir?
Brian Julian. Bulacca, El Pardo. Come on down, Cebu, Philippines.
Thank you. Many even non-Filipinos love the Philippines, so thank you so much for joining. And please like and subscribe to The High Voice America. And we're grateful to have our congen, eh, kuya. Thank you so much, kuya. Okay, Ria, tingka dito, one second. Isa pa, eh, sa badok. One, two, three. Ah, thank you po. Eto, magpasalamat kami sa inyo lahat, and please be safe and God bless you. See you again soon, bye.